Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. The time right now is seven P M. Going to ask that Clerk Wykoff, please call the roll. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers present in establishing a quorum are Councilmembers Vulture, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Gamble, will you please lead us on the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item that we have on the agenda this evening is public comments. Uh, this is a limited public forum for people to speak to the city council. During this council meeting, topics are limited to items on tonight's council meeting agenda. And to topics specific to city laws, budget, and operations under the council's authority. Comments that are outside the limited scope will not be allowed. Comments that do not follow the council's rules of procedure will not be allowed. Person to the council rules of procedure is amended by council action on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Spoken public comment is limited to in-person comment only for all city public meetings, including city council and all city boards and commissions until further notice. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Spoken comments that are not within the scope or timeline limit of this limited public forum can be sent to the council in writing. Information on where to send written comments and to view the rules of procedure is on tonight's agenda and on the screen. Uh, we will now begin public comments. Um, I'm going to ask that as I call people forward to please state their name, area of residence, or association with the city, and the topic. After that, we will then start the timer. Uh, I'm now looking to see if anybody has signed up to speak. We do have Brandy Blair here. And, uh, Brandy, please come forward. Thank you for coming this evening. And if you just please state your name, area of residence, and, uh, the topic, and then we'll start the timer. Thank you.
Uh, Brandy Blair, uh, downtown resident, and issue is traffic calming. Uh, the P three committee tonight heard from consultants regarding, um, traffic calming survey, uh, results and recommendations. Um, I'm a local resident that's concerned about driver's speed and pedestrian safety. The results of the survey showed that most respondents, uh, those were also their two top, uh, concerns. I think that we can take action from the city's level to change the driving culture in Monroe. Something that I think is unique and to consider, uh, is that with Monroe having three highways converging here, we have many people who are coming home from the stressful commuter environment before entering Monroe. And that is seeping into, uh, what we see in the local traffic. Uh, I believe that a concerted effort with a campaign, slogans, and signs that notify drivers that Monroe supports walkability and conscientious driving would help to change that culture. Uh, the, that would be consistent with Imagine Monroe goals on many levels. Uh, by enhancing walkability, you and therefore end up, um, creating traffic calming by you can decrease driver speeds. Uh, some things that would help would be enhanced crosswalks, overhead lighting at corners and over sidewalks. Um, these are easy and could be quickly created and would be cost effective. Uh, while survey respondents and the consultants did not believe that the your speed, um, flashing signs, uh, would help. Uh, I've seen data that shows that these are evidence-based effective, uh, in reducing driver speed. These also collect data so that the city can review if they're working or if more enhancements are needed in certain areas. Um, I think that we should be focusing, um, these enhancements in areas that people are already using. Some of the recommendations were for, um, side streets, a little here, a little there. Um, and they did call out that the current traffic calming policy for the city only applies to local or collector streets, and it excludes U S two, Main Street, Kelsey, Lewis, Frylands, Roosevelt, Chain Lake, Oldo, and Woods Creek. Unfortunately, these are the streets that need the most traffic calming and walkability. Um, please examine the current policy and expand it to these streets. Please you look for easy, quick, and cohesive strategies that will get the most results for the most people to reduce driver speed and improve pedestrian safety. Um, with special emphasis, uh, to get people access to services, parks, schools, and businesses. Please use Imagine Monroe to guide your decisions and find ways to create the most impact. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, um, and I don't see anybody else here that is interested in speaking. Um, Clerk Wykoff, I do know that Councilmember Hanford's got his hand up on the attendees list if you'd like to be able to be brought forward. Thanks. Okay, uh, not seeing anybody else who would like to speak this evening. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And that next item would be this. It would be item number five point one, the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-two Transportation Benefit District Audit Exit Conference. And I'm gonna start off with our Finance Director, Essert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, slight change tonight, the, because this is a city council meeting and we did not advertise this as a joint meeting with the Monroe Transportation Benefit District. The state auditors are here to do the city of Monroe's audit. Um, as you know, we had the fiscal audit that was completed back in September. We still had the accountability audit. At long last, it is complete, and so that we will turn it over to them. I believe they should be in the audience, so. Okay. Um, so with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to the auditors.
And before you do that, so I understand, just to be very clear on the record, that item five point one is not going to be addressed this evening.
Correct.
Okay, so just to be very clear on the record, we are not discussing five point one. That's gonna come back to the Transportation Benefit District and or the council at a later date.
The TBD at a later date.
Perfect. Okay, and so we're moving on to five point two, which is the two thousand and twenty-two Accountability Audit Exit Conference. And thank you very much, Finance Director.
So I just wanna introduce myself. So my name is Courtney Emmetson. I am the audit supervisor for this year's audit. Um, and with me is Christos Kokavas, who is also your audit lead. Um, if possible, can I share my screen so I can present our results? All right. Um, well, thank you all so much for giving us the opportunity to go over the results, um, of our audit this year. We believe that, um, you've already received the packet of information that we're gonna go ahead and and discuss during our presentation. Uh, you don't need to have that in front of you. Uh, it's just there for reference that we'll be referring back to from time to time. Um, so with that, we'll go ahead and get started. For those of you that, uh, well, whether you've been a part of an audit before or not, um, the audit process, um, is really just making sure, um, at the end that you understand the results of of your audit. Um, it's important in establishing and maintaining good government. Um, audits help build your trust in your organization by letting you know whether things are working or whether there are areas that might need some fine tuning. Uh, it's also shine a light on areas that are important to your citizens, um, and your own employees. And as an independent organization that conducts over twenty-six hundred audits of state and local governments each year, uh, our audits can be relied upon to provide transparent results directly to your citizens. And then lastly, audit recommendations are made to assist your government in continuing to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of its operations. And so ultimately, our goal today is to make sure that, uh, you understand the results of the audit, um, and that we answer any questions that you might have. So we're gonna go ahead and start with the accountability audit. This is the audit that we completed most recently, and then we'll circle back, uh, to the audits that we completed earlier this year, as this is our all-encompassing audit results. Um, so, uh, an accountability audit was conducted for the period of, uh, January first, two thousand and twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. And the purpose of an accountability audit is really to, uh, make sure that the city has complied with state laws, uh, regulations, contracts, any agreements or policies or procedures that, uh, are, um, effective or required of you. And these, um, audits also look at whether, in general, the city has adequate controls to safeguard public funds. Uh, so you'll see on your screen and in the packet, uh, that, uh, this is actually coming from your accountability reports that, um, in those areas that the city complied in, um, all materials, um, respects. Um, and we really had, um, everything was what we'd expect it to be with the exception of one area that, uh, we will be discussing in just a little bit. So the areas that we selected for testing, um, we perform what's called a risk-based audit approach. Uh, so during the audit, we, uh, conduct a variety of planning procedures to determine where we want to focus our time. Um, so that can include a variety of things from reviewing your meeting minutes, um, doing some analytical procedures, discussing and having, uh, risk assessments with various members of management and council. Um, and then we narrow down where we wanna focus our time. And so this year, uh, we chose to focus on, uh, accounts payable. This obviously is one of the areas that you spend the majority of your, uh, public funds. Um, so we looked at general disbursements, employee reimbursements, and electronic funds transfers. Um, this is the one area that we did have, we have one single recommendation and of all of our recommendations, um, and all their accountability and financial and federal compliance, there's just one recommendation. So I'll be discussing that in a little bit, but overall, uh, it's really impressive, actually, that there's just one in total, so great job. Um, the next area we took a look at was payroll. That's really the other area that you spend the majority of your funds. Uh, so we took a look at gross wages, making sure that everything was being calculated and paid correctly, uh, overtime, that that was being monitored and calculated correctly as well. Uh, leave balances and accruals, that that was all in accordance with your policies and, um, any agreements that you have in place, as well as electronic funds transfers, and then compensation of public officials. Uh, we're also required to take a look at self-insurance every two years, so we looked at, uh, unemployment. Um, and then we looked at the software conversion that was, um, over your general ledger, as well as open public meetings. Um, this is an area that we're required to look at, at all local governments statewide, making sure that you're in compliance with, uh, minutes, meetings, and executive sessions. Um, and then finally, we took a look again at an area that we look at all of our local governments, which is financial condition, really just making sure that, um, there weren't any indications of financial distress. So the one recommendation that we did have, this was related to, um, electronic payments. There was, um, the city correctly reported a, uh, suspected loss or an attempted loss, I guess I should call it. Um, where, which is required by state law to report it to our office. So we took a look at the circumstances involved with this particular situation. Um, and basically what happened is, um, in the process of the city setting up a vendor, a new vendor to be paid, uh, the, somebody basically, um, hacked into, uh, the city's email system and changed the, uh, account information for that new vendor. Um, and so the person in question attempted to, um, essentially get about seventy-two thousand dollars paid to them. Um, we're happy to report, and I know the city was happy that this was, uh, prevented. It made it to the bank, and it was prevented from actually making payment, which is wonderful, so there was no loss to the city. Um, but unfortunately, we have been seeing this type of, uh, cybersecurity, um, attempted theft, uh, statewide. Uh, this is an area that has been on the rise, um, in the last couple of years. And, um, really, the recommendation is stemming from the fact that, um, what could have happened could have been something much worse than thankfully what it was. Uh, and so our recommendation is really to make sure that there are, uh, written policies and procedures in place to, uh, ensure that reliance on email does not, um, take place, that if there's any, um, whether it be a vendor account information or an employee, um, that gets paid electronically, that there is some kind of verification that takes place before that vendor account, whether it's new or just a change in account, is is verified from a reliable source prior to that payment, to hopefully prevent a situation like this from occurring again. And then just making sure that there's adequate communication and training, so everybody's on the same page with what the requirements are to ensure these types of, um, accounts are being verified prior to that happening. Are there any questions before we move forward from this?
Any questions from council? No questions.
Okay. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Christos to talk about our other, uh, audit reports.
Thank you, Courtney. Our second audit is the financial audit, and this covers the period of January two thousand and twenty-two through December two thousand and twenty-two. And the report and results can be found on pages six to fifteen of the exit packet. The point of this audit is to issue an opinion as to whether the information included in the statements is complete, accurate, and can be relied upon to make decisions. The city is receiving a unmodified, clean audit opinion over the financial statements, and this is the preferred opinion and provides assurance that the financial statements are fairly stated and are materially correct. Thank you, do the next slide. Thank you. Then professional standards require that we share whether there were any material misstatements identified. We are pleased to report that there were no material misstatements identified through throughout the course of the audit. Then as part of this audit, we also review certain risks that we'd like to share with you. And one of us risk we evaluate is the possibility that management may be able to circumvent certain controls. And we are pleased to share that our evaluation showed that no cases or possibilities were evident where controls are circumvented. Then moving on to our single audit, this also covers the period of January two thousand and twenty-two through December two thousand and twenty-two. And the objective of the single audit is to ascertain whether the city materially complied with the requirement to receive, we, uh, receiving federal funding. And we reported no significant deficiencies with internal controls, and we identified no deficiencies that we consider material weaknesses or matters of non-compliance. So we are issuing a unmodified and clean audit opinion for the single audit as well. And this is the preferred opinion as well. And our results.
Jump into on that one and just, um, we're also required for both the financial statement audit as well as the federal compliance audit to take a look at the internal controls. Uh, and basically look at what process you have in place, uh, for both areas to make sure that if there were control weaknesses, um, that we would be required to report them to you, um, to let you know that could have an impact on your financial statements, as well as, uh, whether or not it could have an impact on the compliance of your federal, uh, the audits that were selected for testing. Uh, so again, for both of those, we are happy to report that we had, didn't identify any control weaknesses in either of those areas, so.
And the results for the single audit start on page nine of the exit packet. And then for the program that we selected, it is the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, also known as SLURF. This grant covered about eighty-two percent of federal expenditures, s- uh, satisfying the coverage needed by federal guidelines for the sake of our audit. SLURF is part of the American Rescue Plan, meant to deliver three hundred and fifty billion dollars to state, local, and tribal governments across the country to support their response and recovery from COVID-nineteen pandemic. And as stated before, we found no deficiencies with internal controls and no material weaknesses or matters of non-compliance.
So just a couple of closing remarks, uh, before we wrap up. Uh, the first one is, uh, we had your, uh, expected audit costs included in the packet, um, as well as at the beginning of the audit in your engagement letter. Uh, we are pleased to report that we're coming in under budget by about sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, and this was due to some audit efficiencies and being able to conduct the audit, uh, mostly remotely as well. Uh, so we do, uh, we're happy to be able to give that money back, or not give it back, but not charge it. Uh, our next audit is scheduled to be conducted in the fall of two thousand and twenty-four. We have you currently scheduled for an accountability and financial statement audit. Uh, if the city is intending to spend over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, uh, please let us know so we can, uh, put you on the, uh, federal compliance audit list as well, and the audit will be conducted in the summer. We've also included the expected audit costs on page two of your packet, uh, for budgeting purposes. And then your report will be published, the accountability report, uh, will be republished, excuse me, in the next two weeks. Uh, we do encourage, if you haven't already signed up, to receive notification when those reports are available, that you do so, there's information in your packet as well as on the screen. Uh, it just provides an email to letting, letting you know when the report is out and how you can access it on our website. Uh, we're also providing an audit survey. We do appreciate any feedback, good or bad. Uh, we always wanna make sure that the audit process runs as smoothly as possible, so please feel free to share this survey, uh, with anybody that was a part of the audit process. And then finally, I'm gonna turn it back over to Christos, one last slide.
We'd like to thank the city staff and specifically Becky and Greg for their help, their expertise in communication throughout the audit. For the most part, this audit was perfect and everything was great, and we know that we had some issues with the cyber fraud, and Becky and Greg were very helpful throughout that entire process, making sure that we got the information that we needed, and it was very appreciated.
So with that, are there any questions for us?
Any questions, councilmembers? Any in-depth questions about SLURF? Sorry, I'm just, I'm thinking of Smurfs, little blue guys. You know, the songs in my head now, so that we're gonna have to get that out of my head.
Um, probably that's not your only takeaway, but it is, I apologize.
So, um, the, the one thing, just a couple of things. One, uh, thank you very much for the work that you're doing. I think the accountability and transparency are really important, um, you know, for the council, for, you know, for the public, uh, for, for everybody. So I, I thank you for the work that you do, uh, coming here every year to, it's every year as it every other year, um, to do this. Um, also, I, I just, I'm gonna take a moment to acknowledge the great work that, uh, our finance team and others have done to, um, you know, to meet the necessary requirements, document things and everything. And I know the, I understand the management letter. At the same time, I also, uh, truly commend those people that noticed, um, this issue. And, uh, that's where artificial intelligence is not as smart as human intelligence. It's because people actually noticed something that we were able to save our community from being, um, from losing seventy-two thousand dollars to, to a thief. And so while you may be looking at a management letter here, I want each of you to know that I absolutely positively commend those staff that were part of that, uh, that noticed that. And, um, you know, we will do what we can to, to lock things down, but as technology changes, uh, you know, even a voice phone call to somebody could be spoofed in the future with, uh, somebody that sounds different. So, um, it's gonna always take that human intelligence to, to get past those computer things that are pretending that they're somebody that they're not. Uh, so Becky, if you haven't already, if you could just share, um, my appreciation with the appropriate staff, Debra, you too. Um, uh, I, I really appreciate the fact that this was caught, so thank you. Um, any other questions, comments? SLURF jokes? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
I would just say, um, spectacular results, especially considering the, the infusion of the art funds and the acronym that I'll let, uh, Jeffrey continue saying, SLURF. But, uh, just amazing work, and yeah, seventy-two thousand saved. It's pretty amazing. I think that deserves lunch or some no names.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Uh, Courtney Christos, do you have anything further?
Nope, thank you for having us tonight, and have a rest of your evening.
Director, Essert, did you wanna say anything else? I, I was trying to avoid saying Finance Director again. I don't, I don't know why I called you, that's Director earlier, Becky. I know. All right, thank you very much, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I turn to council. Councilmember Walker, you've got your light on, so I'm gonna call on you to keep the meeting moving.
Uh, I'm going to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
Second, Fisher.
Yeah, I have a motion from Councilmember Walker, a second from Councilmember Fisher to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Sorry, I was gonna say the A word and realized I didn't need to say the A word. Okay, uh, next item, new business. I need more coffee this evening. Uh, item seven point one, Snohomish County. It's, no, I don't, Snohomish County Office of Social Justice, O S J, application for funding. Rachel Adams, good evening.
Item is an official opportunity.
Better clap twice.
Okay, great. So thank you, Mayor Thomas, Monroe City Councilmembers. Um, this item on the agenda tonight is the opportunity for the council to officially authorize a submission of a grant application to Snohomish County Office of Social Justice for funding. Um, the Office of Soc- Social Justice is providing, um, awards in up to the amount of five thousand dollars of financial support for community organizations to advance efforts related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. The city of Monroe is proposing an application to host a secular version of Everett Gospel Mission's Poverty One-O-One class to provide outreach and education, opportunities to better understand local struggles of poverty, homelessness, and those living in marginalized communities. The goal is to, um, reduce stigma, assumptions, prejudice by fo- fostering meaningful conversations. I can say that I have personally taken this class, and it is a worthwhile investment of time. Um, I took this class in two thousand and nineteen, and I still reference back to, um, visual and, uh, uh, metaphors that were used in that class to explain, uh, complex issues like behavioral health and poverty and Aces. Um, and I'm really hopeful that, uh, we're awarded funds to do this. The other part of this application is to provide information about this class and other city resources in both English and Spanish in our utility insert. So, um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or a motion from the council? Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I think this is an excellent program, and from what I could ascertain, it looks like one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars are city funds, which is not much to create this wonderful sense of community and learning. I love that it's a galaxy or potentially a Galaxy Theater, which we've used for inclusivity training before. It's kind of a community meeting place already, and I just a hundred percent support it, and I would like to move to authorize submitting an application to Snohomish County Office of Social Justice for funding.
I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Hanford for the requested action in this agenda bill, seven point one, uh, that's currently on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda is council member reports. I'm just gonna go popcorn style today, and I'm gonna pick on people. So Councilmember Fisher, you're first, because we made eye contact. Thank you, Mayor. Fisher, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Papa SLURF.
Thanks.
So, uh, Courtney and Christos, I think their, uh, their quote was, thanks for being perfect. Um, to Becky and the rest of the crew, which is, I mean, it doesn't get any better than that. I don't know if I've ever had anybody say that to me, so I'm a little bit jealous, but either way, um, thanks for, thanks for being perfect, as I said. Um, next thing is touch real quick on our S R O, uh, in school districts. Came out in the news today that only twenty-seven percent of, um, the state school districts, it's like three hundred and twenty-one of them or something, um, had S R Os. And I'm just really glad that we kept that program. I think, um, it was super important. I love the fact that we have a great relationship with our school district and our officers and our city and our residents. And so now we're not playing catch-up like some other school districts are that are starting to get S R O officers back in and go through the thirteen-step process that the state requires and all that. We kind of just kept going, so, um, I'm also proud of that. So thank you for, we had something to do with that along with city staff and most of our, all our, uh, police officers. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you for that. Uh, Councilmember Scarborough? All right, thank you. Councilmember Vulture?
There we go. All right, on Thursday night, there were a few of us at the Snohomish County Cities. I will let one of my other cohorts talk about it because I have something else to say. Um, also, on Thursday afternoon, I was at the, uh, Board of Directors meeting for Community Transit, and, um, I am the, um, the alternate for the medium cities for this go-round. I am the um, the alternate for the medium cities for this go around. So Monroe has a voice there and
Thank you.
There you go. It's a two-year term, so. That is the end of my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Fulcher. Councilmember Gamble.
There we go. I appreciate the comments on the SRO. I, I could not agree more. And there, uh, it is something that's been very important to this council. Um, and there is, uh, you know, from a standpoint of making sure that it didn't go by the wayside, uh, especially around the COVID time, uh, there is a thank you to the mayor, uh, and Superintendent Blasko at the time. Uh, Superintendent Blasko and, and the mayor were the ones that were able to kind of work through, you know, some of the concerns in order to make that happen with the support of the council. Um, but there was definitely a time where that may not have happened. So those two individual leaders within were able to make, make sure that that went through. And then the, just the, you know, the support from the Police Department and the chief. And then anytime when that's been a issue that's come up and some of the subcommittees for, for funding, there's always been council members that show up to speak um, and folks. So I just, you know, I, I've been extremely, uh, extreme proponent of it and how do we also get it into our middle school? Uh, you know, and some of the others, but I just appreciate the comments, because I, I, I feel like that's the same even with our embedded social worker and some of the other stuff that we've been able to be on the front end of, so. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Walker.
Um, I uh, like Councilmember Fulcher said, I attended the SCC meeting um, with her and Councilmember Beaumont and uh, that was a great opportunity to meet some of the other local uh mayors and, and council members and um, looking forward to the relationships and um, education that I'll be able to, to gain from that. Um, checked into a, a few of the, today is the point and count uh event for the, the word I'm, I'm looking for, um, for our homeless population in Monroe, uh, so is um, able to speak with some of the, the folks that were running the booths. Um, so I'll be really interested to see the data that comes out of that. Um, I know that there were a few folks that had planned on coming to speak tonight about uh, public safety and pedestrian safety and may not have made it out. Um, but I just want to say that we are working on it. Um, and the council will be reviewing our traffic calming program uh, in the next month, I wanted to say. So, stay tuned because it is something that we're keenly paying attention to. Um, and I also wanted to give a shout out to Chief Jolly, because I realized the other day that he is in every picture of every city event, public event. You'll see his face there. And so I just wanted to give him the gold star, citizen gold star.
Yeah, I was just gonna say he's got three, just like Kyle said.
Citizen. Throw another. And then again, um, Director Hassard and, and to Craig as well. Been asked for a better audit result, so amazing work and, you know, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I concur with uh just about what everybody has said about the SRO and the staff, tremendous work. Uh, I guess I would add one more, uh, add a girl to uh, City Administrator Night, uh, because I noticed that um, you return emails to citizens on Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night. And uh, that's, that's dedication. And that proves, uh, that speaks volumes to you and your character and how you care about your position in the city. So, I appreciate that. Thanks. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Beaumont.
Well, I think I'm last. Um, so yes, I concur with all the wonderful comments so far and uh, actually had an opportunity to um go to IHOP and that was really a great experience, good food, great service and made sure that they knew that they were welcomed into the community. So um, you know, those new businesses, the Indian Restaurant and some other places that are popping up. Um, I think it's just important for us all to go in and, and show our support and uh welcome them to our city. Uh, just a reminder that Jamie Bindle run is this Sunday at uh Sky River Park, starts at ten and um, gonna be out there supporting Behind the Badge and our local law enforcement. And since we're sort of calling out people, um, I would like to call out or give recognition to Brandy Blair for being here tonight. Um, she's really taken um, pedestrian safety, traffic safety, making this a safe, walkable community and, and which is one of our, our goals always as a city to create more paths. So people are walking instead of driving and riding bicycles instead of driving. And it's, it's just an ongoing goal in our city and we're starting to make inroads, no pun intended, to try and get more people walking. And that means that there are dangers out there sometimes. And she's just spent an enormous amount of time putting together her own observations, um, sending well-written, detailed emails to staff. And I just really appreciate her being here and I appreciate her dedication to the city as not only a planning commissioner, um, but as a citizen, a parent. Um, thank you, Brandy.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, we're gonna go to Councilmember Staff and Department reports, rather. All right. Uh, nine point one, uh, Chief Jolly for the Police Department, November and December twenty twenty-three reports.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good to see you all. Thank you for the nice comments, Councilmember Walker. But uh, to see me, you would have had to been there to participate in to uh also. So thank you for showing up to a lot of those events. Um, Councilmember Beaumont, thank you for mentioning the Jamie Bindle Run. I would just encourage everybody, if you have the opportunity and some time this Sunday, please attend. It's a phenomenal community event as well as the three point one mile run is, is for a good cause. So thank you for that. Uh, you have the report contained in your packet. Uh, I would like to point out a couple of things that may not be in it. Uh, we had our annual department meeting and awards ceremony last Thursday, I believe. The mayor was kind enough to attend and assist in helping us uh recognize and provide recognition and awards to our people. So thank you very much, Mayor. That was awesome. It was a heck of a day because we changed because of the weather and the agenda and it, it was a turned out to be a fun event regardless. We do have two police recruits at the academy right now, so that's good news and it's exciting. So that'll pay off a few months down the road. And other than that, if I'm available, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for your Chief Jolly? All right, thank you very much. Next report we have is a community development report. Um, Director Bailey's not available this evening, so we have Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in your packets, first off, I'd like to combine two items at nine point two and nine point three. Somehow we had some issues getting in your packet this evening. Nine point three is actually the November report. Um, if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer them. I really wanted to focus on the December report. Uh, before I get into the requested update on the PUD, I just wanted to give you a few updates. Um, first, we had some staffing changes. We are out right now looking for a permit tech and a building inspector. Our building inspector is moving out of state. We're very sorry to lose her. The other thing I wanted to let you know about, um, in the packet, there's some information about the annexation North Forty-One. It has been withdrawn. The applicants were uh unsuccessful in collecting enough app um signatures for the sixty percent petition. They have already applied for a revised application, which will be coming to you in February. So with that, I'd like to focus on the PUD. Um, there's been a couple of inquiries. First off, just a quick recap. Um, we had a pre-application meeting with them back in uh twenty twenty-two. During that conversation, the Ida, uh, issue of outdoor storage came up. Uh, staff had told them that that is not actually permitted in the tourist commercial zoning district. So the um, PUD representative actually requested a formal code interpretation, which went to our zoning administrator, which is Lance Bailey. At the same time, there was concern that our zoning code was not clear. So we brought a code amendment towards um, back to the city council for consideration, went through Planning Commission. The city council ultimately decided that that's not the route you wanted to go. Uh, then the hearing examiner made a determination in April, uh, agreeing with city staff that our code does not allow outdoor storage. Uh, and then no appeals were taken after that. Then the continue, uh, we continued conversations with the PUD. We had a meeting, uh, actually with the mayor and city administrator with PUD staff in May. Then we had another conversation in Aug, actually two more conversations in August and another um, conversation in October. The PUD also came in and applied for a preliminary critical areas review of the property, which we did process and the final report was issued in October. Uh, continuing on, we have our point person is John Bissel with David Evans and Associates. Uh, Lance reached out to him today and we did get confirmation that they are still working on an application. What will be coming to you eventually is called a development agreement and it's a contract between the city council and the project proponents. With that being said, I just wanted to let you all know, there's nothing, we have no control over the sale of the property. Is our understanding that the PUD has uh done another extension for feasibility study. So from our perspective, we're, we're doing what we can to work with the PUD, uh, but no formal applications have been made. So if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer as well.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Right.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item we have on the agenda is item nine point four, Economic Development Report with Mr. Humphreys.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. So the Economic Development Advisory Board met for its first time this year in twenty twenty-four on January eleventh and appointed Katie Woods as its chair and Janelle Drews as its chair pro tem. And then additionally, that meeting, uh, they also extended formal support for the city's lodging tax application to uh debt service, the newly acquired properties on North Blakey and Main Street. And then it also expressed its formal support for the historical society's historic preservation funding application that goes to Snohomish County. And we're currently working with uh the uh Department of Archaeology to supply them with a little bit more information for that application. Uh, the board has also introduced the economic development portion of the comprehensive plan. Board members were asked to review and familiarize themselves with that portion of the comprehensive plan, provide any feedback. And we're gonna be diving into that in the next couple of meetings, uh, for quite a few months now. The plan is to actually take the economic development portion uh to the business community here in Monroe and socialize with them to try and get as much public input and feedback as possible. Um, we haven't had any subcommittee, sub uh committee meetings yet. Uh, I think the first one's scheduled for February first for the industrial subcommittee meeting to discuss the economic development portion, the comprehensive plan, and socializing that with uh industrial uh sector business owners. Um, so, yeah, other than that, Mayor, I am open for questions.
All right. Thank you, Zach. Any questions on the Economic Development Report? All right. Thank you very much. Right, the next item that we have on the agenda is nine point five. This is Human Resources Information Technology Department, January twenty twenty-four report with Director Warpin.
Good evening.
Mayor, Council, uh, your full report's in your packet. I'll just touch in a few highlights and a cool things that I get to do, stand up here and tell you about all the people that have worked here for a really long time. So with twenty-four years, Officer Tim Walker, another twenty-four years Deputy Chief Ryan Irving. Uh, Mike Farrell's in the audience tonight. He's gonna have eighteen years here. So look at that. There's Mike. So, um, IT, we continue to, you know, have a lot more tickets than we did last year and those uh individuals this week dealt with quite a large outage. And during that ti- downtime, they actually replaced our, our battery backups for our servers, but if that's the bulk of my uh report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, any questions for Director Worthen? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is Public Works Department update with Director Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, in the uh packet there, you'll see that we had quite a busy Martin Luther King Junior holiday weekend with callouts and freezing weather. Some of you may have suffered through frozen pipes. I'm sorry. I'm sure they're thawed by now. Uh, we also got some customer feedback. That was just one of the written versions of that. We also took in some over the phone, so appreciative of our twenty-four twenty-four hour on-call response. Uh, going down there, there is currently a snowplow naming contest going on. So if you haven't entered your names, I'm actually not sure if any of you are eligible, but you can always tap a friend to go ahead and do it for you.
How about Slurf? I'm sorry.
Slurf is an option.
Still my favorite. Thank you, Kyle.
Very good. I'm glad we're keeping it light. And then finally, we have the uh pup, uh, the Public Works Customer Service Annual Report. This is the first time we've done this, as we haven't had that position in place in Public Works for uh much more than a year now. I think uh actually Trevor Orr is our customer service specialist. Might be a little bit less than a year. In any case, you get kind of a, a picture of how many requests come in, how they get resolved and then uh go through kind of our triage here, whether or not it can be resolved on, say, the day of or shortly thereafter, or whether it needs more attention by maintenance staff or whether it's actually part of a larger capital project. Kind of see the statistics there. And then going down the last part of the report, there's our on-call roster contracts that we've let out. Or I, actually, this is during this budget cycle, so it goes back to last year also. That concludes my report. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on uh his department's flurry of activities? Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna go sit down.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is uh item ten, ten point one, City Administrator Report, Administrator Report focused on the Extended Agenda Administrator Night.
Thank you, Mayor. It is a short Extended Agenda Report for this evening. We will have one additional meeting for January. That is next Tuesday. We have a couple of items that I would consider to be important. Uh, housekeeping, which is a review of the Open Public Meetings Act and Public Records Act and Conflict of Interest and Appearance of Fairness. Those came up uh last year at, at the council and the council asked that we bring that back for further information and discussion. We do have one discussion item and that is the strategic plan. So thinking ahead to the next biennial budget, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, and alignment of the strategic plan with that budget. So that, this will be the first meeting to begin thinking about what our priorities will be uh going forward, not just for the next two years, but the next five years. And then uh, the meeting on Tuesday, the sec, uh, excuse me, Tuesday, February sixth will be canceled uh because we have a number of council members who will be at the Association of Washington Cities Conference. And I believe we would nee- need a motion to cancel that meeting. It wasn't on the calendar of, of items.
Councilmember Hanford.
I moved to council. I moved to cancel the Tuesday, the February sixth council meeting.
A motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Beaumont to counsel the cancel meeting. Sorry, to cancel the council meeting from February sixth. Uh, any mo- any discussion on that motion? Now I'm tripping myself up. Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. All right. Uh, any questions about the Extended Agenda? Yes, Councilmember Scarborough. Correct. Five thirty, it's a longer meeting, plus we're gonna have um other boards and commissions here. Yes, sir. Um, and food is or is not provided?
Food is provided.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Uh, so I'll see you all at five thirty next week. What's that? Steak and lobster. And uh something to drink, maybe something to slurp. Okay. Um, next item is City Administrator Report, Administrator Night.
All right, I actually have two slides, so it's a little bit longer than, than usual. Uh, since we canceled the council meeting, I'm glad I could get that out for February sixth. We do need to reschedule the Public Safety Committee meeting. We have a number of items that really cannot wait until March if possible. And so there are a couple of alternatives, Monday, February fifth, or Thursday, February fifteenth. I know it's sometimes difficult to coordinate meetings from the bench. If we're able to do so, that's great. Otherwise, we can reach back out to council members and, and take a poll uh after the meeting tomorrow. Okay, sounds like tomorrow we'll send out a, an email and try and get some, some consensus around either February fifth or the fifteenth. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Uh, we do have the National League of Cities Conference. That is gonna, that will be Sunday uh, March tenth through Wednesday, March thirteenth. Uh, if you are interested in attending uh that conference, uh, please let Zach know he needs to confirm the flights uh by this Friday, January twenty-sixth. Just a reminder that that deadline is coming. Uh, finally, we've got uh three council members uh who, if you could, stay after the meeting this evening, so we can talk about the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Conference and just the the logistics and planning for that. So if you didn't stay after at the last meeting, this will be the meeting that you'll need to stay after. The logistics and planning for that. So if you didn't stay after at the last meeting, this will be the meeting that you'll need to stay after. Talking about legislative updates, uh, just to remind the city council that there were. A number of initiatives that have been certified, uh, repealing the Climate Commitment Act. Um, that act has raised one point eight billion in twenty twenty-three. Uh, Jacob Roberts and I were on a call this morning with SCIT, which for Snohomish County. Watches what's happening with transportation and does a lot of collaboration with jurisdictions within Snohomish County around transportation. And what we heard this morning was that. Um, there is a connection between the money that's being raised um, through the Climate Commitment Act and funding for Washington State transportation projects. I think we hadn't previously heard that. That's the first time. I expect for those of us that are going down to. Uh, the Association of Washington Cities Conference, we'll probably hear more about that, that connection. And so thinking ahead about. Um, the city's transportation priorities and finish five two two, uh, the mayor and staff are going to be. Um, meeting with Marco Leas, the Chair of the Senate Transportation Committee on Monday. And so we'll be sure to follow up with um, Senator Leas at that time and. Find out more about that potential connection between the money that's coming in through the Climate Commitment Act and um, funding for priority transportation projects in Washington State. Uh, the other two initiatives that have been certified, um, Initiative twenty twenty-one, which is a right to review curriculum and inspect records at schools and school districts. Uh, so it's not necessarily something that the city is directly connected to, but just wanted to make you aware of it. And then um, Initiative twenty-one thirteen, reasonable pers- uh, police pursuits. And so there is, at this point at least, um, and uh, I think. An understanding that the majority of these initiatives that we're seeing are going to be moving forward um, to the voters in the fall. There won't be um, any action taken by. The legislature in this sort, in the short legislative session to try and um, make any changes to these initiatives before they go to the voters. A couple of initiatives have not yet been certified. Um, that's Initiative twenty-one oh nine, the capital gains tax. Uh, Initiative twenty-one eleven, which is a no state tax, income tax, and then Initiative twenty-one twenty-four. Um, which would allow residents in Washington State to opt out of the long ti, long-term care. Um, benefit. So we will continue to um, update the city council as more information becomes available about these initiatives. I do have one more slide with some additional updates um, rega, related to just legislative monitoring. Um, we are watching. Um, House Bill twenty fifty-one, which would adopt the California Small Off-Road Engine and Equipment or SOAR standards. Um, we're watching that because it would affect future purchases of mowers and other small equipment. All of that would have to move off to um, battery operated as opposed to um. Uh, gas operated or diesel fuel. So we're monitoring that. Um, House Bill twenty-two eleven and twenty-two thirty-one are very similar to one another. There's only kind of two. Um, uh, slight differences. Um, twenty-two eleven would give cities uh, the legislative authority to implement a three-tense sales and use tax for criminal justice purposes. And that's broadly defined criminal justice, meaning, you know, everything related to ports and everything related to um, public safety. Twenty-two thirty-one is a very um, similar bill, but it uses a different funding source. That's a new local options state tax. Um, it is specific for attracting and retaining law enforcement officers, and that tax would be credited against the state sales tax. At this point, um, there is. Uh, again, kind of a, a belief that um, the state legislature is more in favor of twenty-two eleven because it doesn't um, impact the state's own sales tax. So it looks like if between those two bills, um, twenty-two eleven, they have more traction in the legislature at this time. This is a very short session. I did include um, on this slide, the cutoff dates. Uh, so the action is really fast and furious. It's been difficult, I think, for legislators even to know what bills have been dropped and what's coming in front of them. Um, the first cutoff date is the thirty-first. Uh, so we will know um, which bills um, still have some traction in the legislature for this session. Um, the fiscal cutoff is February fifth. That'll be just before we go down to Olympia for the AWC conference. And again, we'll have a much smaller and narrow. Um, number of bills in order to be paying attention to at that time. So uh, we will continue to provide you with updates. Um, the session, it ends on March seventh. Really, at this point, there's only six weeks left. There's not much time. So there's gonna be, uh, as we've mentioned, um, mostly. I think meeting legislators at the AWC conference by pulling them out of, off the floor because they will not be sitting in their offices. They're just gonna be voting, I think, all day long. So there you go. That's the update. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the legislative stuff? Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Do you uh? Maybe we could find out what status of House Bill two thousand and two, it's the one that.
Say it again.
Two thousand and two zero zero two.
Two zero zero two.
I'd be interested in.
Sure.
Yep. We'll get that information up to the council. Councilmember Scarborough.
Yeah, could we also get a readout on House Bill two-two-three-eight?
Sure. Well, any other questions or comments at this time?
I, I will uh, provide that information to council via email tomorrow, just so you have it sooner than.
Thank you very much. Right. Um, next item on the agenda is just Mayor's report. A couple of items. One, Deborah already mentioned it. I will be going down with staff. On Monday, uh, taking the day off to go to Olympia to do uh, some advocacy around five-two-two and other topics that are on the uh, council's legislative agenda. Um, and then uh, earlier today, I, separate topic, inter- uh, interviewed uh, somebody for a vacant EDAB position. Um, and then uh, last week I participated in a meeting with staff and our consultant on branding. Um, really impressed with how things are developing with the branding. Uh, we'll have a couple of um, things to bring to you in the next, what, four weeks or so? Um, and uh, just looking forward to some conversation around what it is that the group has come up with to share with the council and. Uh, see what council's direction is on uh, the branding. So. Anyway, sorry about being vague on that right now, but you'll, you'll see more in about three weeks. Sound about right? Okay. In February. Yeah. Does anybody have any questions, comments, good slurf jokes for me? Kyle's cut off. I'm cut off from the slurs now. I'm done. All right. Um, thank you. Uh, so we do have a need for an executive session this evening. It is property acquisition person to RCW forty-two point thirty point one ten subsection one subsection little B. Uh, this will be for an initial, I'm gonna call it seven minutes. Um, and uh, there will be action to take at the end of the meeting, if nothing else, to adjourn the meeting. Uh, so if you are listening in the audience, uh, either here or remotely, I would encourage you, if you were interested, uh, to stick around until after the executive session. And um, if we do need to extend the executive session, I will let our clerk know who will make the announcement of any extensions, both here in the room and also online. Uh, so we are now in executive session for an initial seven minutes beginning at uh, seven fifty-seven PM. Okay, there's um, uh, we're now out of executive session. The time right now is uh, eight oh four PM. Uh, there's no further business this evening, so unless there's objection, we are adjourned. We're adjourned. Have a great week, everybody. Thank you.